This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Good morning, everybody. I'll call the meeting of the ACG Committee to order. And I think we all, do we only have one item on the agenda?
Actually.
Okay, all right. Do we need to make these announcements on the front page where everyone can see them? So I think everyone can.
I think it's a small enough group.
Let's jump right to the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And this is a special meeting of the Audit Compliance and Governance Committee of the Green Bank. And this is a follow on meeting from our last regularly scheduled meeting to go through some of the questions and concerns and insights that were received from committee members on the updates to the tuition reimbursement policy that was being proposed to be revised and also to go through certain new methodologies that Eric will, Eric Schreger will also cover. So with that,
while you're changing screens, Brian, I don't know if it's on the agenda, but I'll just ask if there are any public comments. And hearing none, we'll keep moving.
Perfect. And we had the meeting on May 18th, so I would just request that we have a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
I'm moved.
Seconded.
All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Opposed, abstained? Oh, I'm going to hand this over to Eric to kind of present on the educational assistance program. But in a nutshell, all we did here with these slides were take the questions that we emailed out to you guys. You could go through those individually. We can handle questions as they come. We could kind of go through them individually and maybe try to pick up the pace if there's, and then pause on certain areas where you may have concerns. Ones where you feel comfortable. So with that, I'll pass it over to you, Eric. I don't know if you have anything here on this slide, but I could go to the next slide if that work.
I'll just walk slide by slide through all of these. Stop me if you have questions or faster, depending on your preference. So the first thing that was asked was just an overview of the existing policy. The existing policy is where we're supporting employees who are presently seeking degrees or pursuing something, some sort of higher education, either undergraduate graduate or something, some certificate. We do that 100% up to $10,000 on a credit basis. For full time employees, part time employees that are working at least 20 hours a week at that prior rated. We have a pretty strong approval process that goes to employees department head into Brian and then to myself. Employees must maintain at least a C average for undergrad classes, a B average for grad classes. And they must have an overall rating of meets expectations. Any questions? We'll move on to the next. There was a question about turnover rates. So I pulled together historical turnover rates. You see the higher ones in 2018 and 2019. Those are driven primarily by the legislative sweeps. Typically, we've averaged around 7% in this period. And those two, I did factor out the, those staff transact and transitioning to inclusive prosperity. But there were still some layoffs in there. Anyway, the main point that I wanted to highlight here is the, on exit interviews. An often cited reason for leaving is an employee's desire to or need to, for increased compensation. Questions or concerns? All right.
It's Lonnie. I just, just a quick, just because I'm nosy, where do they go? Do we have any sense of where they go when they leave or is anything, you know, any, any place that they end up more, more often than others?
I think there isn't like one, there's only one firm that everybody's leaving us for, fortunately. That typically they're headed to private, to the private sector.
So for example, I mean, like the utilities is one place where, you know, employees have left. Then there's also companies that we have relationships with, like Green Works has spoken to a few of our employees about at times. You know, we lost not directly to Posigen, one of our counterparties, but you know, Ben Healy, for example, he went to IPC and then quickly went over to Posigen for, you know, greater financial opportunity. So this was a great question that Tom Flynn brought up was like, well, you know, I'm less concerned about how we compare with quasi's and stages in some ways more concerned about how we compare with those other companies that are potentially threats of poaching us. And those would say would be kind of like the typical ones boutique financing shops.
Project developers like Siemens is another one. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Brian.
I know. You're good, Eric.
So the next question that was asked was how long does it take us to hire employees? And this is, the simple answer is on average, three months. It's not really an indicative answer. It really depends on the, how specialized. And the staff that we need, for example, battery storage, we left that role open for three months just to get a critical mass of applicants. We still haven't hired that's outside of this. That's due to us waiting for pure to act. But just the need to open this up to get to something that gave us a good feeling that we had enough people come through so that we were able to pick from is a little bit indicative of kind of how things are for on Burt's team, one of them. We were, we've had a ton of competition in the past for internships on that team. I remember my first summer with the Green Bank. I think we had 150, 170 applicants for two slots. This year, the number of applicants was under 50. And we had four candidates that we made an offer to, all of which turned us down to do something in the private sector. So we are experiencing, I wouldn't say it's a little bit less of an interest, but it's also less of a desire to be in the public sector. The comment that was directly given to me by two of the candidates for Burt's team were, oh, well, if I go with such and such, then it's more likely to pay off in the long run, or this is with a project developer that is going to pay me more after I graduate. So it's kind of contributing to the overall comp story that we're, we're seeing.
And putting a positive spin on it, I think that there actually are real clean energy jobs out there that are kind of growing in the Northeast. You know, I always felt like there is definitely people who go to some of these kind of like specialized clean energy, want to get in the space. It's like, okay. California, maybe New York City. It does seem like there actually is kind of a true growth in the clean energy space. So there are highly qualified candidates who, you know, we'd be on a small list of like, yeah, that's my dream job. I want to go there. And I think now there's similar type opportunities at greater pay.
Yeah. And I would, if I may add, it's, it's not only more opportunities in the space, but more opportunities in the space where where it's not for profit, meaning the not for profits that are doing this are paying a decent salary more. So it's, it's not like these people are money grubbers and they're going to work in private equity in an ESG fund. Right? So it's to Brian Farnin's point, the space, we are nine years further on. Well, we're celebrating our 10th anniversary this summer. So we're in a, the space is evolving rapidly. And so it presents a big challenge for us. So, you know, we're, we are quasi, but I think, you know, we have to be just kind of cognizant of the marketplace. So I think this is just one, one way seeking to retain talent, which is always easier than, you know, bringing talent, new talent on and, you know, attracting new talent, bringing new talent on. It's, it's always easier to retain and that's where this is going to.
Should we move to the next slide?
Sure. And the one thing I would want to point out is that this program is a five year program and the current intent would be ended because one of the justifications we have for the program is the fact that it was, you know, a bipartisan federally approved policy, you know, signed into law by Trump. We're stretching our dollars by making potentially $5,000 be more like eight or $9,000. So, you know.
Guys, this is Tom. I got cut off there for whatever I was on mute. Going back to the prior point. First of all, thank you very much for following up on that. As we move along here, with the exception of the money grubber comment, which I will comment on, given private equity is a lot of my clients. I, I would say that I think benchmarking ourselves against those other entities as opposed to quasi governmental is the way to go. And it's actually, if I might be so bold, it's something I've been pushing for, for quite some time with the Green Bank that we in all of our operating metrics, benchmarking, compensation plans and the like, the further we can get away from being treated as quasi governmental of the better, in my opinion, for a variety of reasons. If we're going to play in this space, and as you guys said, we've been playing in this space for nine years. And we've transitioned from a grant writing function to actually a loan function and a true financing company. I think we need to act more and more like our competitors and, and, and our colleagues in the space in order to grow the space. So, you know, when I look at our compensation plans and our structures and our things like that, I'm always geared more towards that and more towards, you know, variable compensation, compensation for performance, for hitting metrics, for hitting targets, retaining talent and pushing out, you know, the bottom five or 10% where, where they're not getting the job done. I just think, A, I think it's good sense. But now, B, I think it's, it's becoming apparent based on the comments here that we need to do that in order to maintain our position in the marketplace and continue to do the good work that you guys are all doing. So that's the end of my soliloquy, but I just wanted to tell you my frame of.
To Tom's point, we are looking at our compensation structures and we have just issued an RFP for a compensation consultant. This is refreshing the work that we did about five years ago, four or five years ago. So I, I do think we have the opportunity to do that benchmarking of compensation as well.
This is Matt. I don't disagree with Tom's point, especially, you know, I think that it's a tribute to the Green Bank management that I think our retention rate looks pretty good. I mean, I'm not a human resources person, but the fact that it's as low as it is, I think speaks to the not financial measures that people also value. It's obviously a workplace people want to work in. And some of them can't make it work or the attraction elsewhere is high enough. I also think the market's evolved. That's good news because remember in addition to our goal of being a, you know, financial institution, our goal was to develop and grow the market. And so all that means it's, you know, good news. I guess the one caution I would have in Eric and Brian and Brian and, and, you know, everyone else. My concern in the past, we've always looked at and had to keep a close eye on quasi's and public agencies because we are quasi and politically, you know, we have to be, always be cognizant of how that plays in the press and at the legislature if we're viewed as out of scale with them. So it's a weird, I think we're in a, you know, tough spot. We have to compete for talent with people without that restriction, but we always, I think, have to keep an eye on that. And I don't know, maybe that's less now, but I remember years ago, we were very concerned about how that would look. So I'll leave that to you guys. But as we go forward, you know, just, I just don't want us to create a problem for ourselves and the people at the legislature who are, I won't say anti quasi, but, you know, very suspicious that quasi's are out in front of themselves. And so that, I'll just stop there.
Hey, hey, Matt, it's, Matt, it's Tom. I couldn't agree with you more. And I think your caution is well placed. Which is why one of the things that I said when talking to the guys kind of offline is we have to be bulletproof on our performance, right? And, and you're absolutely right. There are going to be people that take shots and, and say, you know, we're quasi and, and benchmark us against that. Which is why we have to show, you know, very strong performance, both financially and in achieving, in achieving our targets, like you just talked of, of growing the market and providing more clean energy. And basically do our entire argument based on the fact that we are different. And look, in, in, in sending people this way and in acting, you know, more non quasi, we're getting better performance for the taxpayer, for our partners and for the environment in general. So I, I think your caution is very well placed. I just think we need to back that up by showing stellar performance. And I, and I think, you know, reasonable people could still disagree. And there's still going to be those people that take pot shots regardless of what we do. But I, I think it's a good caution.
And I agree with, this is Brian, just saying, you know, this is the reason, and we have, you know, taken that advice. That's why, you know, we're not like other quasi's that have cost of living adjustments. Everything is based on merit. We're one of the few governmental entities that performs 360 reviews. You know, having clear annual metrics for goals to base on what those, you know, merit, you know, improvements would be is all, so those, so yeah, those are all things that we'll continue to do and continue to kind of push more. So I think we're all on the same page, which is great.
Yep. Cool. So the next question that was raised is with regard to the historical usage of this, of the existing policy. And since 2015 or 2016, we've had 15 members of staff take advantage of this. They pursued and earned MBAs, MPAs, Masters of Architecture and Sustainable Design, as well as certificates in leadership in Clean Energy Finance. And next. So there was a question raised at the last meeting on whether staff could have a choice between a salary increase and a non taxable tuition reimbursement and the guidance that I read around the Internal Revenue Code, so that employers could not give employees a choice on this. Equity, this, I know that Matt, you raised some concerns around this. This is something that is open to all staff. Thus far, the feedback that we've had, and I'll be anecdotal, has been positive that people weren't, people that don't have student debt aren't upset that they don't have student debt anymore to have this paid off. Those eligible can take advantage of it or somebody who doesn't have debt can pursue a new opportunity as well under the existing program. So. Next slide.
Hey Eric, quick question on that last one. Just out of curiosity. So if we do this, how does it get paid? Do we cut a check directly to their loan or is it a check to the individual, you know, then, then gets paid to the loan?
We could, we could set it other way. Part of me is fairly reluctant to take on figuring out how do we pay all the loan servicers? It's a lot easier just to cut the employee a check with proof of something out there. But we can work through that operation, like either, other options.
I think there might be a preference, preference to working with the servicer only because we're assured that the monies are going to pay down debt. So notwithstanding the fact that be a little bit of an operational lift, you know, with ACH payments and all, and those services all keyed up to, to take ACH payments. I, I, I think we can work it through, but I, I agree, Eric, we should talk about it offline.
So in terms of that benchmarking to other quasi's and state agencies and private industry, the Department of Administrative Services finally responded to our inquiry. If this is something they were looking at and they said, this could be part of the ongoing negotiations with CBAC and would have to be for them to do anything, but that was their only comment. Other quasi's I know are currently reviewing this. Connecticut Innovations is also considering making a change. In terms of private sector employers, the number of employers offering this is rising. National Law Review found a handful, but this is expected to grow. The SHRM, the Society for Human Resource Management, was the big advocate for this to be included in the CARES Act and they're kind of like the best practices in terms of HR. And so they've been a solid advocate trying to expand upon this and encouraging private industry to offer this as a best practice for employer retention. So that's to the same point that I just mentioned about SHRM. So overall, state and quasi government employment is not traditionally the first place that our top talent that seekers typically pursue employment. So we're trying to offer them this compelling story and the compelling opportunity. We think that we do that with most everything except for compensation and so this is a way to kind of close that gap. We have a strong track record of attracting and retaining top talent. But this is again, just giving us another tool in that fight as it is becoming more difficult. And this incentive will help us do that. Brian or Burt or Brian, anything you guys want to add?
No, just, no, I think the questions that we got out of the last meeting were really helpful and hopefully this helps give you a better understanding of, you know, the program and what, what we're trying to be done here.
It's Tom. One other item that we talked about in a previous phone call was that this sun sets when the, the federal legislation sun sets. So that we're not out there providing this benefit without the, the tax funding that's available right now.
That is the intent.
Right.
The intent is that it would sunset.
Right.
That would be included in the language in the policy. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do you, Brian, do you, I know we're creeping up on nine. Do you need a comments and then a motion on this? Or is there more you want to present?
No, that's all we'd have to present. And I think it would be a motion to make a recommendation to the board so that we bring it to the board with the blessing of both ACG and the Budget Operations and Compensation Committee.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion if someone wants to make one.
So moved?
Seconded.
All right. All those in favor, please of recommending this to the board, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, hearing none. All right. That's great. Thank you, Eric and Brian for, I know it's a little extra work, but I, hopefully it'll pay off at the board meetings that will have all these answers.
No, thank you for your thoughtful questions and input. Appreciate that.
No, thank you.
I will, I will go through this next topic fairly quick. It's pretty straightforward. So our prior meeting of the, this committee, we walked through a new methodology around vulnerable communities, which was just bringing the organization's methodology in line with the, that from statute to formalizing our process for evaluating our impact on vulnerable communities. So what we have here is another methodology that we're formalized. This has to do with how we speak to customer savings and reduction of the energy burden. And this is for a subset of our programs where we have insight into renewable energy generation as well as customer expenses for going solar. The next slide. Who, as I mentioned, the subset, this really applies to where we have this, there's two pieces of information. So those are PPAs and or our lease funds as well as our solar loan fund and Posigen. Where we know the lease price and we also know the generation due to our locus of stat, our locus solar monitoring platform. So next slide. What we're effectively doing is looking at how much a customer has saved from having gone solar. And it's a pretty simple formula. It's, we're looking at what would the customer, we're looking at the overall generation, what would the customer have paid to purchase that amount of power from their typical provider, the utility, and then what did it cost them to go solar for that same period? So for example, if I am using 100 kilowatt hours in a month, then what would it have cost if I purchased that versus ever source versus what's my loan payment for the solar that I have on my roof? The difference between that should be my savings. And we're looking at this and saying, all right, customer access now save the difference between these two, that is how much they, the amount by which they produce their energy burden. In terms of putting all of this together, we have direct insight for all the programs that I mentioned into what those expenses are from what's provided to us from the, either the loan servicers or from Posigen or when we sign the PPAs. In terms of the generation, we're getting all of that, the actual quantity from Locusts and we have insight into that in 15 minute intervals. We're looking at that aggregated on a monthly basis. In terms of the rate supplied, I have to give credit to Carl Johnson, who unfortunately isn't on the call today. Carl sorted through a mess of pure documents and was lauded by Saffa Pure for having done so. They actually wanted to see his database that he put together of the rates. So we have historical rates going back that we're updating every six months to say, all right, for this class, this is how much electricity was, was costing. And so we're capturing that typically upon, on the commercial side, certainly when we're signing those PPAs and we're approving those projects. And then we have some general assumptions on the residential side for the solar loan program for Posigen and the solar lease. We did actually look at utility bills and that's captured from those in terms of what the rate class was at the time. So I spoke through, we're sourcing all of these. This is where we're keeping all of that. Junior just jumped to the next slide as I rushed through this. So we're looking, obviously this is pure internal calculation. We have vetted this with Pura and with Deep, we've sought their input. And they were impressed with the work that we had done in terms of going through rates and they generally approved of the approach. We've reviewed all of this with the program owners internally to make sure that there isn't anything that we're leaving out. We did have some issues on the solar loan just due to the approach. We revised it on that. So basically we put in some controls just to, which are pretty much just best practice. We're doing an estimate to actual production check on Power Clark. We are ensuring, we're putting this as part of staff's performance reviews and making sure that they're reviewing production to make sure that stuff is in line with where they would expect it to be, which, you know, we probably should be doing anyway. And then we're going to have a third party audit this as part of the review of our non-financial statistics and the consolidated annual financial reports. So they're looking for, is this reasonable? Hey, we don't have a system that's producing 10 times what it should. The savings look like it's like it's meaningful and everything's kind of the order of magnitude that one would expect. So I realized that that was a very abbreviated expedited version of this, but if you guys are comfortable making recommendations to the board, I would make sure that we have more time to discuss in more detail at the board or we can push to the next meeting. But I would love to have this in place so that we could include this in this year's CAFRA impact reporting.
Have you, this is Tom. Have you gone through this with the external auditors yet?
Yes, I have.
And their comments have been incorporated or have they signed off on this?
So the comment that I have is, well, this is your policy. It's not ours to approve or disapprove of, but they thought that the approach seemed reasonable and in line with what they've seen from others do in the space.
So, and you've ran the traps with kind of the statewide, the other statewide agencies. And as you said, they were quote unquote impressed with the methodology. Is that fair?
They were impressed with the work done and they were comfortable with the methodology.
Is there any, what I'm looking for, when you put a program like this in place and you're kind of, for lack of a better word, making it up as you go along, right? Which, which is what's going on. The key is that, A, number one, you're consistent from year over year and that you're not changing the benchmark. You're not changing the calculation. So A, we need consistency is king. B, transparency and that every. Consistency is king. B, transparency and that everybody can easily follow. The calculation, kind of what the elevator pitch was of the calculation. And then C, you know, doesn't make sense and you, and you've run it through kind of the other state agent. Yeah. Is there a higher authority we can run it through? Is there something at the feds? Is there something? Uh, somewhere else where we can say, you know, how do you do it? Just as an extra level of sign off on the approach. Because once we get the approach. Signed off on, like I said, the key is to stick with that same approach. On an ongoing basis so that we can properly uh, understand what, what we're measuring against and what the benchmark is.
And could I add one comment to that? Um, I, I agree. And maybe one other thought is unless it doesn't cross jurisdictional lines. I, I've always thought one of the values we have is data, like the ability to collect it and socialize it and, you know. Uh, set the, set the benchmark. If, if we like this, is, is there any reason we couldn't, after we do what um, what Tom suggests, shop it to other green banks that we participate with? And see if they would be uh, interested and that way we would really have a powerful metric that could be. Uh, standardized through all the whole green bank network that I know we've spent a lot of time and effort. Um, being involved with and I think it would magnify the impact of this.
It's a great idea.
That approach, totally happy to take it to the network. I think that the methodology is about as straightforward as we can make it. Um, that. Taking what would I have paid for this versus what I did actually pay, I think is, you're not going to get any more basic than that. And in terms of Tom's point on transparency, we are more than happy to. Probably a little bit of an anonymized version, but uh. Provide what generation details there are, what rates we used. Since there are in terms of uh, payment and this is. A 100% replicable, replicable from year to year, period to period. Um, in terms of a federal authority. I, I don't think we, we could talk offline and I would defer to Brian in terms of contacts at US DOE, but I don't know if this is something that they would typically opine on.
Yeah, Eric, this is Brian. Um, you know, Tom and Matt, we've typically done this with the US EPA on tools that we use that are their tools. Um, so on the public health and the air emissions, we use their tools. And they opined and they said this is a reasonable representation of, of those benefits. Um, Eric, the group that comes to my mind would be NREL, the National Renewable Energy Lab and. And you know, this isn't their tool, that to your point, this is straight data and, and rate data. So. I think we could run it by them just to have them opine on uh, whether or not they feel this is sound, you know. Between NREL and LBNL, both those federal research agencies as part of DOE. Uh, we've given them tons of data. They love our data on Posigen specifically and they publish papers quite extensively on our data. Um, so I think we could probably do that, Eric. They, I, I don't think they're going to say much beyond, okay, yeah, this feels like, you know, reasonable what you guys are doing and it's conservative too, right? I think we're, our sense is that the actual is going to be less than the estimate. So. That's a conservative approach.
Okay. Any other comments? Do, do we want to, I, I guess, the members, do we want to vote to recommend this? I'll entertain a motion if we do.
So moved.
A second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, hearing none. Uh, it's, it's uh, adopted or recommended.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Well, great work again, Bob. Thank you, everybody. Any other comments from anyone on the team?
Uh, just thank you for the time and effort that went into these uh, proposals.
Well, thank you.
All right. Well, thanks, everybody. Have a great day and uh, thanks for, thanks again. Well, adjourn, oh, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Aye. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, okay, we're adjourned.